In the United States of America. In a two different public, which stands one nation and under God. And it is all with no routine judgment.
I know everyone's. It's like we say in the Lord's. Cause we've been mess up. All right, good luck, everybody. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. And agenda any changes additions?
Well, I'm gonna go through.
Oh, second.
A motion at second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous motion carries, okay, minutes from last week.
Uh, motion to approve last week's minutes.
Okay, right.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous motion carried, okay. General public concerns, do we have anybody here for general public concerns?
I got one complaint. The city of Humboldt moved their trash or compost pile. Up off of Kentucky, I think it is. And that road is nothing but dust. Uh, the guy told me, he says, you come sit in my driveway for this few hours. This past week or a week and a half, he says, the dust did just roll from all the traffic going out there. And uh, he was wondering if the county got anything for dust control. If the city paid anything on it. And I told him, didn't know. And I talked to one of the city council people and they said they would can look into it. But he's really upset because they moved that compost out there and it's. Not good for the dust.
All right, in regards to that, I got a question for Ben. You were making from the city?
So, uh, we feel that complaint last Friday. Um, we sent one of our blade operators out there to try and cut off the wash boarding from. Just the amount of traffic that's stomping on the gas, hitting the brakes.
Right, stopping there.
Plus the sheer quantity, I think that's on the road. Uh, had it chewed up pretty good, uh, as far as dust controls. When the city said that they were planning on moving to the, and we talked about dust control at that time. Um, they're aware of it, that it's an option that they can do. Uh, they didn't do it this year, but yeah, they feel the nothing claims. With all his neck.
Compost, the biggest time is fall, all the leaves.
All the leaves and going out, that's what he was saying, and the dust, he says, the white dust, the house and. An hour later, it's back the same way it was, it just dust rolling in everywhere.
I mean, as far as secondary roads, I'm not interested in dust control on that.
Right, no.
It's not our compost pile.
No, that's why I say I asked if the city had contacted the county and said they would pay, because the individual. Uh, acreage people pay for their dust control, it would be them paying for the dust control, not the county. The county's not the one with the compost pile.
Yeah, I mean, even though it's a shared roadway.
That's what I say, because they, it's a shared roadway with the city friendly.
For the, the composting would, or the reason for the dust control would be because the compost pile, they like. Churches pay next cemetery on gravel roads.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay.
Good. Yeah, that makes sense, all right, thank you. All right, Ben. You're up.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, don't, nah, he's not used to getting.
I know, it's even, I look at it's even a minute.
I have two items on the agenda for today. Uh, both of them are applications to work in the counties right away. The first one is for Ben's tiling and excavation. To dig around a surface drain and repair it, this is actually. Uh, inside the city limits of Gilmore City on, I think it's two hundred and twenty-fifth street, it's the. The short diagonal that comes east out of Gilmore, just south of highway three. It's a Lynch Farms.
I know.
I believe it's county.
It is, it's a malfunction, uh. The, you know, project, and there's, it's been ongoing issue, you know.
Yeah.
One of them, but I think we got figured out what it is, but it does need some attack coming. There's shit's right in the, right away.
So he was calling and locates last week.
Okay.
Um, but needed the permit here.
Well, I know what he's up to, I make a motion to approve the permit for Cory's digging.
Now, second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous motion three.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is also an application to work in the counties right away with uh, D and M drainage. Uh, this is for Doug Marso, just north of Boda, uh, on Iowa Avenue. This would be Cliff Helen's eighty. Uh, the south end of that eighty doesn't drain very well, and our grading maps from that show that there is a. Tile located in the east ditch, there's no intake there, but. When there's a tile on your side of the road in the ditch, property owner has the right to hook into it. Uh, I've talked to Doug, uh, because it runs with the road, the county's not responsible to maintain it, so if he's gonna hook into it. Dig and make sure that it's a viable tile. So that's what.
Make sure.
This is, he wants to make sure that it's a good tile. Before he.
How long, how far is it running a road ditch, you know?
Quarter ways, uh, well, I mean, from city limits of Bode north to where the dredge ditch is. Half, three quarters of a mile, but it's only a five inch tile. It's not like the one that we run into down here where it's an eighteen inch, but I mean, this was clearly put in at the time to. Drain the shoulder of the roadway.
Yeah.
When the state had it back when it was all high, highway two twenty two.
The state did that.
Yeah.
Quite often we find out.
Yeah. But this is.
In order of it?
Yeah, everything's, everything's in order, it's an application, so he can do some exploratory.
We're not really sure what he's.
He doesn't know if he's got a suitable outlet yet or not.
He's spied out.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna motion. Dave, did I second?
Okay, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous motion carries.
Uh, beyond that, the. Transformer from Mid-American made its move on Thursday and. Successfully got in and out of the county that day.
Okay.
Uh, we're in the process of removing the radiuses down on Montana and one forty. So.
Yeah.
So you gain some rock.
Yeah, yeah, which is about the only thing that we got out of that one, because the thirty-five dollar moving permit.
Yeah, yeah, they, they pay for the costs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Building the right of the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
It was fun to watch the parade.
Yeah.
I was down there before it come through, and then I come back, it was, I was on highway three and it was going up the hill, but.
Okay.
Yeah, before they come through, your lawn chairs were flying down.
Cheap entertainment.
Yeah.
I guess so.
They said, uh, at one point when they took off down by Indian Hollow, they had twenty bucket trucks going with them. Basically dropping lines in front of them, and then re-spanning them once they got through, so.
I seen made American was lifting lines down on the highway. Did you get ready to move?
I saw that too, I was just gonna ask him, man, if he had opportunity to double check the. Road crossing tiles.
So I, I evaluated all the crossings beforehand, uh, watched them drive across, I haven't been up to reevaluate them. That's my plan today.
Okay.
Make sure that there's no damage to any of the smaller cross pipes.
I know, that's what we talked about.
Yep.
And that's an agreement, if there is any.
Right.
Hopefully not, but.
If there is any, they'll cover the cost, they've already agreed to that, so, yeah, that's my plan for today, is to run up and take a look at those.
Excellent.
Yeah, what day did you first contact them, do you know?
They con, so they contacted me two weeks ago today, uh, just before five o'clock.
Cause I got, you know, I was gone and I got home, I had a voicemail from Mid-American. They've never been so nice.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so in, in one of my, one of my emails. Uh, the guy wanted the expedited, I called you and talked to you about it, and I'm like, I'm, I'm content sitting on it.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna suggest wait until I got back.
Yeah. Um, but, uh, yeah, when I came back to work. The following day after sending that email out, I think I had three voicemails from Mid-American representatives.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. All very friendly. It's the one thing that recalls our issue, either town.
Any, any situations in the past that we have any loose ends on, so I'm gonna make a phone call about our switching station out here.
Yeah, I would too, yeah, make them aware of the Mike and Angie.
Yeah, so will.
With some ordeal.
Okay, it's all due, is that a swap?
Yeah, I can't remember, Dave, or I. Don't know, it's what's on my safe, but saved it, so I'm gonna give them a call today.
They called me about quarter after six in the mornings. And. He said, uh, his name, and he wanted to know if we were satisfied with tiling. That was out there at that switch station.
Yeah, so it's probably the same guy.
And I said, what the hell are you calling me at six o'clock in the morning? And he says, well, isn't this your business number? And I said, what business starts at six o'clock in the morning?
Yeah.
I said, you can call me back about eight thirty and I'll be up and have my breakfast and be right away.
Yeah. I don't know if we'll get much of a reaction now that they've already moved.
Yeah, they got what they want, yeah.
Uh, beyond that, uh, boat shop got some of their snow fence put up on Friday. Um, the other two shops, I believe their plan is to try and get to it this week, put up what they've got. Uh, we're not putting up near as, near as much as what we used to. With the equipment that we've got nowadays, you don't need as much.
Yeah.
Trying to wrap things up, since the weather's starting to turn, starting to get colder.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
Thanks, thanks.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda, we'll go down to, since it's not eight fifty yet. Um, approve hiring outside council for representation of the Board of Adjustments. Next, you're in the is.
Yeah, well, per, uh, when you were in on the discussion, where it's gone, of course, but. That was kind of the consensus from last week's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, did reach out, talking, kind of back and forth with Randy, and we need to find the correct, obviously.
Right.
Person that works at this, and there happens to be one fairly close by, and is the. Firm of Johnson Mulholland, Cochran, Cochran, Young, and Engler.
Oh, Ford Dodge.
Ford Dodge.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, there is a, uh, it's actually Nick Cochran, uh, who specializes in this sort of work. And so even personally contacted him to double check, so that was the case, and Randy is aware of this, and, uh. It should be what, moving along with what the discussion was, to get these questions answered, they're hanging out there. They've made that, you know, mo- mentioned a couple of times last week, and this should get us really pushed forward, and then with this. Uh, hiring the, the board through Randy can get their questions answered and, and get, get this going where it needs to be.
Okay.
So, with all that, I would, that make a motion that we do approve hiring the outside council for the representation of the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah.
Our second tip.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. And the other discussion?
Time frame on this, is this a?
Well, ASAP, ASAP, yeah, and that's why I thought.
Stop, because his lawyer said that he could go ahead and dig.
Mm-hmm.
And we gotta get it stopped.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, he doesn't realize that it's a time sensitive.
That's what I was wondering, I, I.
This is not something that.
That's, that's what I was hoping you made.
Yes, and.
It's not something, oh, two, two.
No, no, I had enough of a, he understood enough, and I gave him enough of a synopsis of the, the. You know, losing things, what we know at the date. And he said, no, once you, you know, we have to, you know, prove it, and so I would say it's, it's gonna move forward, starting hopefully as early as today.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion.
Nick, Nick, Nick Cochran.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, unanimous motion carries, all right.
All right, so.
Five more minutes, so do we do the media or?
I am, be quiet, thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Uh, Monday, I was back up here to canvass the votes, could reappear into canvassing. Then at five o'clock, we found out the conservation meeting was moved, moved from Wednesday to Monday, Bruce and I both attended that. Um. Humboldt County Housing, uh, Wednesday. Uh, that's it. Let's make all ahead, I agree.
Thanks.
Uh, Tuesday, Monday afternoon, we reconvene to canvas the previous week's election. Then on Tuesday morning, at the Public Safety Commission Board Meeting at eight o'clock. Uh, Tuesday, and that was my few official things last week.
And I was gone, so I hadn't been still attended.
All right, on Wednesday the fifteenth, I had kitty cat daycare and I participated by a phone. And that was it? Okay. Been one minute, too quick.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Is that our canvassing?
Yeah.
Dave.
Randy, you got anything?
Um, I'll contact, uh, the attorney today to try to set up. A time that I can, uh, hire several, maybe two or three of us can meet. I think a big good idea to have at least two, uh, sets of ears to, uh, make sure that we get everything correct, and then also I've been in contact. With, uh, the adjacent property owners and told them I would get, uh, back to them as soon as I knew more, so I'll contact them and let them know that, uh. We're in the process to try to expedite this and, uh. At least get, uh, you know, uh, initial answers, uh, for what we need, and then we'll go from there.
Have we got any, uh, board members, uh, appointed?
Uh, no, cause I thought maybe it'd be a better idea to wait till we have the meeting, uh, with the attorney. Uh, to find out his advice as far as whether or not that should be done before or after, uh, the process starts.
Okay.
Want to make sure that, uh, you know, we, we've got, uh, the situation, uh, in the, in the position that it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Randy.
Eight forty-nine.
It's a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to recess board supervisors and convene as Board of Canvassers.
Second.
Here we get a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous motion carries, all right. Canvas votes.
Okay, so, the purple sheets are the ones that we recently went over last week with the Humboldt election. On the top. And it also has the other counties that would be included in that with the totals at the bottom. And the white pages behind it are what the adjoining counties have sent us as their canvas, so. It's basically just double checking the purple sheet, county number against what they had sent us.
From Pocahontas County.
From Pocahontas, Wester, and Wright County, and. So I don't know if you, somebody wants to read something.
Names.
Yeah.
Well, you basically, you're just matching county per county poll matters, correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, make sure what's on the white sheet is drawn in the purple sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause what's on the purple sheet will end up going in our canvas for retaining in our records.
Okay.
And we're.
Well, can we just go one by one and just, um, yeah, one by one, Dave, you wanna go ahead and do the first one?
City of Gilmore City Mayor, Landon Bailey. Uh, twenty-two votes Humboldt County, forty-five Pocahontas County, sixty-seven total. And he, he elected mayor, is that the way we should be looking at groups this?
That we be reading the Pocahontas first.
Yeah, well.
I think we need, we only need, we already proved the.
We already proved Humboldt.
We just gotta do Pocahontas.
Basically, we're just making sure that this.
Pocahontas man.
Actually, Pocahontas had forty-five votes for Landon. And that's what it states over here.
Yeah.
Okay, City of Gilmore, City Council at Large. Pocahontas, uh, Mary with thirty-six, Jacob thirty-nine, Paul forty-one. City of Gilmore, City Council at Large, fill a vacancy. Irina Jacobson. Forty-two. Forty-two over here, that'd be right. Yep, yeah. That's fine, well, let's get to Gilmore City Bradgate School Director at Large. Uh, wow, this is three counties, that's what I gave it to you.
Aye.
Oh, we're just going by totals, Abby Telford, uh, Pocahontas, we're gonna look at Pocahontas, if I can make sense of it, that's big. Uh, how am I supposed to?
Oh, I just use iPhone.
Bottom, which is one.
Webster is one, and Pocahontas is forty-one, forty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm looking at the next page, got the total of forty-one. Okay, that'd be one, that matches up, and then the next April Smith. We have. Total of seventy between, uh. I mean. Uh, I'm not following this. Is anybody else?
Well, we, we gotta. Oh, just a minute, let's like, uh.
Thirty-six, Pocahontas. But we have one, one web.
Webster, yep.
So.
Two to look at.
A minute, yeah. Okay, so here's Webster, so thirty-six and two is correct, we go, go to Jurgens.
Mm-hmm.
We have thirty-six and two, and Jurgens thirty-six and two. And do we need to do the other ones? Scattering overload under bolt, hold on. They fresh?
They, you can, yeah, they match, but.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So while scattering, uh, two. There are two. Oh. Um, there were, under bolt. Aye.
The scattering. Is two, it's the Humboldt County.
Okay, I see.
That was the only, that's the right answer.
Yeah, okay, we don't need to worry about the under bolts. I do what you do.
Um. Yeah, it says on there, the Pocahontas one was eleven.
Eleven.
And. Butchers two, overboats were zero.
Okay, well, then for the, that whole thing between the three counties is correct. That number's on that. That's gonna be a fun one to do, but I'll do it, Gilmore City Bradgate School Director at Large, could fill a vacancy. Again, between two counties, Devon Elrich. Over fifty-two, one to three, fifty-two, Webster, three. Scattering. Pocahontas, but the year alone. Sandy's agreeable.
Yep. With me on.
Zero, okay, um, so, that looks like that, Phil Zach.
Yeah.
Rick, you wanna have that go away? Humboldt School Director, District Two.
Okay. All right, Humboldt. Okay, we got Humboldt. School District, District Two, we got Christie Clark. For, uh, total of four, here at Creek. Uh, absent team, zero. Total of four.
Yeah.
And then next, there's no over, no unders. And, and then the Gold Hill precinct. Looks like nobody voted.
Correct.
So it's, they're all zeros. If that was a boring. And then we'll go to Humboldt School District Director, District Four. Or. Beer Creek again. With a total of three. For Jim Mertz. And we had one over and under. Or one under and, oh, there's still a total of. One under, sorry, so I forgot one. No, in Wright County. Bunches of zeros again.
Yep.
And we have Humboldt County, Quinn River School District Director at Large. Okay. Little girls, right.
Did Claire the winner?
Mm-hmm.
Where's, you're going to bowl. Uh, Gilmore City Mayor. It's Landon Bailey. Of all counties voting. Council at Large, Mary Kirkleton, Jacob Peterson, Paul Kuiper. All sixty-three total, Jacob from sixty total, Mary fifty-seven total. Right. Okay, Gilmore City Council at Large, fill a vacancy. Irina Jacobson. Total sixty-two. Gilmore City Bradgate School Director at Large. Abby Tilford with seventy, April Smith with seventy, Angie Jurgensen with fifty-eight.
It was to elect two.
That was my question, yeah.
That would be for two on that one.
That is two.
It'll be Abby Tilford and April Smith.
Correct.
Gilmore City Director at Large, to fill a vacancy, Devon Elrich, total of ninety-six votes, all three counties. Humboldt School District Two. Christie Clark. All three counties, three hundred and fifty-seven voting. District Four Humboldt. Jim Mertz, three hundred and seventeen votes total, all three counties.
Next three for the next one.
I mean.
Three.
Three. Okay, Kalen Stoltzer, this is Twin Rivers District at Large. Kalen Stoltzer, both counties a hundred and eight. Ashley Folds, both counties a hundred and eighteen. And Emily Jensen, both counties of ninety-four. That's great. That would be it.
Yeah.
Second, move a second, okay, Eric Seconds.
Anything else? It's board of canvassers.
That's declaring the winners, right?
Okay, so all those.
Aye. Alright.
Alright, okay, unanimous. Okay, we declared the winners.
I make a motion to adjourn as board of canvassers and reconvene as board of supervisors. Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you already did committee reports, so any other things that need to be brought for the supervisors?
Make a motion to adjourn nine oh one.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, nine oh one.
For eight.
Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Randy will be in touch, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think I'd do one of you.
So I'll pass it on.
So Murray Bridge. Two million dollars.
Okay.
There's a razor.